Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Planning Board Meeting of August 6, 2025 via Zoom. Notice of this meeting was given to the Township Clerk and posted on Township Bulletin Board and Township Website Calendar, and sent to the West Orange Chronicle and Star Ledger. This meeting has been properly noticed to the public in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. No new matters will start at 10:30 p.m. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty.
Thank you. Please be seated. I have to go to my cellphone for the announcements. The next Planning Board Special Meeting will be held August 13, 2025, at 6:30 p.m. in person at Town Hall. The next Planning Board Regular Meeting will be held September 3, 2025, at 7:30 p.m. via Zoom. Roll call, please. Yamalat?
Mr. Alpert?
Here.
Mr. Cardoza?
Present.
Ms. Caffrey?
Here.
Mr. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Morgan?
Here.
Mr. Nobrini?
Here.
Mr. Wokes?
Here.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Present.
Mayor McCartney?
Present.
Mr. Waino?
Present.
Chairman Bagel?
Here. Thank you. Are there any absences?
Uh, no, not today.
Thank you. Okay, so the first order of business is the February 26, 2025, West Orange Planning Board Draft Minutes. I make a motion that we adopt the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman, seconds. Are there any questions, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Seeing none, I move the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Wokes?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Caffrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Waino?
Yes.
Chairman Bagel?
Yes. The minutes are adopted. I make a motion that we adopt the April 30, 2025, West Orange Planning Board Draft Minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mayor McCartney, seconds. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, I call the motion. Yamalat?
Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Wokes?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Ms. Caffrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Waino?
Yes.
Chairman Bagel?
Yes. Draft minutes are adopted. Ms. McGovern, would you swear in the Township Professionals, please?
Okay, we have Mr. Hazel. Do we have anybody from Sammy?
No, not Sammy, nor Major.
It would be Zaiabeth.
And Zaiabeth is not in. If Zaiabeth comes in, I'll swear her in. Okay, Mr. Hazel, please raise your right hand. You swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you.
Thank you. We have an ordinance review, 2935-25 revised with amendments, ordinance, the outdoor cafe, 4911-2488-7631 V1 Final Clean of Resolution, and outdoor cafe in the B1, B2, and PC districts, ordinance 2935-25, master plan consistency review. So before we get started on this, I'm gonna, this was posted today around 11 o'clock for the board to review. How many of the members, by show of hands, has had time to open this and review this so we could discuss this intelligently this evening? One person. Two people. Okay, so we don't have a preponderance of the board members that can do this this evening. So I recommend to the board, and we'll vote on this, that we postpone the hearing of this ordinance review till our next regular meeting based on, this was placed on our agenda today at 11 o'clock, and most people work, and we're not able to review this. Yamalat, I will call for the roll call. Saying yes means we will postpone it. Saying no means we'll hear it this evening. Okay, saying yes means we'll postpone it to the next regular meeting. Saying no means we'll hear it this evening. Yamalat, I make a motion. I need a second on the motion.
I'll second.
Uh, who seconded it?
Nobrini.
Mr. Nobrini. Captain Nobrini, thank you.
Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Nobrini?
Yes.
Mr. Wokes?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Ms. Caffrey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
I'm going to say yes to table, but I do have three questions, Chairman, if we could ask just...
No, you can ask afterwards, but it's on the motion.
Okay. Yes to table.
Mr. Waino?
Yes.
Chairman Bagel?
Yes. Motion table to the next meeting. Ms. McGovern, would you inform the council, please? Mayor McCartney, go right ahead, ask the questions.
Okay, so I understand Mr. Hazel submitted a report. Downtown Alliance has submitted a report. Chamber has also submitted a report, but I feel like it still lacks clarity. One of the provisions in the ordinance talks about amplified music. You know, sometimes you walk down a main street and someone has soft music. You know, I understand the intent that the council is trying to do. We want to be respectful to our residents and to our business owners, but I think there needs to be a definition on what amplified music means, if it means decibel levels or something there.
Mayor, that's why I recommend we table it to the next meeting, so we've already, everybody comes up with questions and answers, and then we will be able to provide the council with a better understanding.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll have time to read Mr. Hazel's report, Megan's report from Downtown Alliance, and whoever else provides a report to us. And we can also have the public speak, so we will have more time for that. But I think the board really needs to understand what the...
I understand. I think it also should be consistent with our noise ordinance that is already on the books. You know, we're changing the hours here from to 10 o'clock. I think there should be consistency there.
Okay, and Mr. Klein?
Can we get a copy of the Downtown Alliance's?
We'll get a copy. I will have everything. Ms. McGovern, can we send that out to everybody?
Well, Megan sent it out to, I don't know who you sent it out to, Megan. I know it was emailed to me. I didn't really get a chance. I quick printed it out and read it. I think, Megan, what you should do, because I think you mentioned that your group needed to kind of give it the okay as well. When it is ready to be published, so to speak, it should be sent to Jamalat to be put on the agenda, so everybody in the town can read it.
And I did send that to her, and it's posted.
So it will be posted.
I think it was too late. I think it was like after 5:30 or something.
It really was. It was a busy day.
I also have a question. I don't know if you see my hand.
Go right ahead, Councilperson Scarpah.
Yeah, given, you know, the sense of urgency that a number of residents have had about this and the amount of time that we've been discussing it, why was it just put on, you know, today? Why wasn't this done sooner so we could have voted on?
I don't know. This is the first I'm hearing of it. At 8 o'clock this morning, it wasn't on, and at 11 o'clock, somebody asked a question, and I went back and I looked, and it was on. I've been working...
I just would like us to move more swiftly, if possible, you know, because this has been a problem for residents for quite a while, and there's been significant discussion about it.
I agree, but the problem was there was not significant discussion at the Planning Board, and I want to move it as fast as we can, but I also want to give the members an opportunity to read it and make sure that it makes sense, and we can listen to Mr. Hazel's report and Ms. Brill's report. And then...
Okay, great. I'd just like to see us get the information in a more timely fashion. Thank you.
I'm ready, so we will find out why it was just given to us today, but I can...
The report by Mr. Hazel was also given to the Planning Board on Monday, so that's why it was just posted on the agenda.
Okay, when was this sent down to the Town, to the Planning Board to be posted?
Okay, I think I can answer that. Mr. Hazel's report was sent on
Fourth.
Monday, and then, I don't, wait, today's the 6th. This morning is when I was asked to be put on the agenda, and I said, is it if it's, if it's going to the council next week for their council meeting, put it on the agenda and see if the board can get to it. So this morning is when we knew it was all ready in terms of a planner's report and the ordinance draft that the council, I guess, is going to, has fine tuned, and that's the one that they wanted to look at. But it is all last minute. It is.
Right. It is very disappointing that this hasn't been done in a more expedient fashion.
Well...
I just would like to say that.
I understand that, but we got it as fast as we could, based on everybody getting things together. So we're trying as best we can. Having said that, thank you. And next, the application. PB 25-06 Turtleback Zoo, Gibbons Exhibits, 560 Northfield Avenue, Block 163, Lot 1, Zone R1. Renovate the existing Gibbons Exhibit at the Turtleback Zoo. Mr., I would imagine, Mr. Flader for the applicant. Sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Bagel, members of the board, and also other township officials who've joined with us tonight. We appreciate the opportunity to be heard. This is a courtesy review as provided by the New Jersey statutes 40, calling 55, capital D, dash 31, small letter A. My name is Mark L. Flader, F-L-E-D-E-R. I'm one of the senior attorneys from the Connell Foley Law Firm in our Roseland office. Some of you may recall that I've appeared on behalf of the county any number of times previously before your board to present similar courtesy review applications, and in particular in connection with Turtleback Zoo. On or about July 2, our principal witness this evening, whose name is Michael J. Piga, P-I-G-A, we'll come back to him in just a second, filed a written report explaining the proposed renovations to what is called the Gibbons Exhibit. That's already at the zoo. This is a proposed renovation project, and we can tell you a little more about the details of that. In particular, though, it's, from a planning perspective, it's kind of a minor matter because the building is going to, is proposed to be enlarged by only 125 square feet in its rear section. And again, Mr. Piga will address that. We have with us, besides Michael Piga, who is a licensed landscape architect and a registered landscape architect here in New Jersey from the French and Perillo Forum. We also have Sanji Vargis, who has joined our meeting here. Sanji Vargis, I'm sure known to all of you, is both the Essex County Engineer. He's also the Director of Public Works. And also with us this evening is Gillian Fazio, F-A-Z-I-O. Gillian is the Director of the Turtleback Zoo, and so any questions about either the project itself or the operation at the zoo, we could direct, if you will, to either Sanji Vargis and/or Gillian Fazio. With your permission, I'd like to introduce Michael Piga. Again, he's testified before this board on any number of occasions in connection with other projects at Turtleback Zoo. And I assume it would be in order to ask Mrs. McGovern to swear in Mr. Michael Piga.
Mr. Piga, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I caught that.
It's backwards on the thing.
Thank you very much. Mr. Piga, are you currently licensed in the state of New Jersey, and if so, could you tell us as what?
I am currently licensed in New Jersey as a landscape architect. I've been for the past roughly 23 years.
Okay, is your license in good standing?
It is.
Are you currently a part of the French and Perillo Consulting Engineering Firm?
Yes, I am.
Are you the same person who has appeared before this board on any number of occasions in the past about other projects that you were involved in at the Turtleback Zoo in West Orange?
I have.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'd like to introduce Mr. Piga then as the expert witness on behalf of the county with respect to the project.
So ladies and gentlemen, the board, Mr. Piga is well-known to the Planning Board. His bona fides are well-known. He has identified that he's a license, his license is in good standing in the state of New Jersey. Unless somebody has a question, we will accept him as a licensed landscape architect in the state of New Jersey. Go right ahead, Mr. Piga.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Piga. Are you the same person who authored and signed the letter of July 2, 2025, which was addressed to the township that explained the proposed project known as renovations of the Gibbons Exhibit at Turtleback Zoo? Is that you?
That was me.
Okay, without repeating everything that's in here, all of which I assume has been distributed to members of the board, as well as both the town engineer and the township planner. But could you tell the board briefly what's involved in the project?
Well, the Gibbons Exhibit is already existing over at the Turtleback Zoo. It's just being, getting a facelift, for the most part, just to keep it simple. The facelift includes the netting is being replaced. That was one of the major things that we were doing out there. But while we were doing that, we had opportunities to do a little bit of other adjustments in care of the way that Gillian at the zoo, the zoo director, preferred. So a couple items that, just to summarize it, was, and I have drawing, a drawing to show you, that would help everyone. I can share my screening.
Was this part of the submission?
This was part of the submission.
Okay. Please do.
So... Everyone can see my screen now?
No, sir.
Yes, sir. Okay, so just briefly, everyone knows the Turtleback Zoo on Northfield Ave. And to give you an idea, here's the main entry. The Gibbons Exhibit is almost in the heart of the Turtleback Zoo. And then to give you an idea of what this project consists of, like I said, the netting was needing a repair. So now that we're upgrading it, we're going to be putting a brand-new net system in. The fountain system stays. We're putting in two new platforms for the Gibbons to sit on. They're three stories, three tiers, about 18 foot high. We're adding a new viewing window. We're changing out the concrete pavers to go to brick pavers to match up with the fountain area. Adding a little bit of landscaping on the outskirts. We're putting a little tunnel for the Gibbons to have a new exploration that brings them out to the guests. And then, as you can see in this area, this was the existing building that we're talking about, a little bit of a vestibule pop-out. It's six feet by 21 feet, and we're going to match the height of the roof now, which will put it at 15 foot to match up with the existing story building. Adding a sidewalk. And really, this is what the renovations are. Basically, this is what it is. I don't know if there's questions regarding that.
Hey.
Piga, you mentioned there landscape, some landscaping is being added. Is that what's shown on the drawing that's in front of the board right now?
Yes, so there's existing bamboo in areas that we're keeping. And then we're going to just bring in, there's a couple older shrubs that we're taking out, but for the most part, we're just putting in new grasses and lower bamboo so that people can see in those areas. No trees are being removed for this project. No new trees are being added for this project.
Very well. One other question, which I don't think you covered, does the public actually get to go inside the exhibit when the proposed renovation is done?
No, no, they will not be allowed in. They will have their viewing locations, either at the, the main viewing is at the tip, or we have designated areas on the side. At no time will the, the public be with the Gibbons or trainers or any of that nature.
Right. Will the, will the public part of the project, public access part of the project be available as handicap accessible?
Yes, everything that is out there will be handicap accessible. It already is. It's just, we're just making some adjustments out there to it.
Very well. And one last question for me is with respect to the 125-square-foot little addition to the rear of the building. Have you made any, or have you made computations to see if that's going to have any meaningful impact on drainage in this exhibit?
The amount that we're adding is 125 square feet. It's de minimis. We're not, we've already, you know, no, it does not have an impact on water.
This may be out of your, out of your direct line of understanding, but do you know when the project, assuming the board has no other comments or suggestions, do you know when the project as now proposed is going to get done? In particular, is it this year or?
It would be this year. It'd be sometime in September. Starting, yeah.
And will, will the fact that the project is underway interfere with the public going to the zoo?
It will not.
Very well. And do you know how long it's anticipated that the project will take to get to completion?
Depending on weather and everything, roughly about five months.
Five months. So go through the winter and be available next, maybe next spring. That's the plan?
Yes.
Okay. Members of the board and Mr. Chairman, that's all the direct questions that we'd intended to put to Mr. Piga. Obviously, he's happy to entertain any questions or comments or suggestions that the board wants to put to him.
Thank you, Mr. Flader. Ms. Caffrey, do you have any question for Mr. Piga on his testimony?
I do not. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Caffrey. Mr. Cardoza, do you have any questions for Mr. Piga on his testimony?
No, no questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardoza. Mr. Morgan, do you have any questions for Mr. Piga on his testimony?
Not at this time, Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Wilks, do you have any question? I'm sorry, Mr. Klein, do you have any questions for Mr. Piga on his testimony?
No questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wilks. Do you have any questions for Mr. Piga on his testimony?
No questions.
Thank you. Captain Nobrini, do you have any questions for Mr. Piga on his testimony?
I have no questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alpert, do you have any questions for Mr. Piga on his testimony?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilperson Scarpah, do you have any questions for Mr. Piga on his testimony?
Yeah, just one quick question. Given the decimation of our tree canopy, would it be possible to put a few native trees for shades into this project for those who will be standing around observing?
It would be difficult because of the nature of the netting. What we're trying to do is there's a canopy that goes over the top of this exhibit right now. So the type of trees that you were talking about with shade would, they would immediately have an effect on the exhibit itself. So in these areas, we really do not have that. However, I mean, I don't really show you the areas on the outside. They, we are having, we do have trees in this area, and they do provide shade for these locations.
Okay.
Thank you. Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions for Mr. Piga on his testimony?
Oh, thank you, Chairman. No questions, just a comment that the administration is ready to present a bamboo ordinance. And during our discussions, Michael, your name has come up numerous times because you integrate bamboo often with county projects at the zoo. And I know I have always asked you how to control it, and you do an outstanding job explaining that. So we are using those methods in our ordinance, in our proposed ordinance. So I just appreciate it, and thank you.
No problem. If there's ever a question, you guys can reach out to me.
Right, you know I would call you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor McCartney. Vice Chairman Garina, do you have any questions for Mr. Piga on his testimony?
No questions at this time, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Hazel, do you have any questions for Mr. Piga on his testimony?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Piga on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Piga on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
I'm not seeing any yet, although Councilwoman Scarpah has...
Councilperson Scarpah, you have your hand up.
Yeah, just one more thing that's come to mind. A couple of residents have talked to me, you know, since our increased attendance and expansion of the zoo, it has created facilitated some challenges for the community. One has been a multi, increase in garbage from Oak Ridge to like Pleasant Valley Way and from where the zip line is to Walker Road. I just wanted to know if the county could do a good job of kind of monitoring and taking charge of any of the excess garbage that is, you know, being dumped in that area.
I could share that with the county.
Mm-hmm. Okay, just anything you can do to, you know, mediate the situation. That would be helpful. Thank you so much.
We'll take that comment back to the, to the county officials.
Yeah, Mr. Flader, could we get a hotline or something like that, that people from the town could call that would be answered by the zoo as opposed to going from our town to the council, to your guys, to going around and around, maybe more, something more direct?
Sounds very reasonable suggestion. I'll make that inquiry, and we'll advise you accordingly.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mr. Piga on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
We do. We have Robert Raxas. Please state your name and address for the record. Go ahead, Robert.
Public comment section.
Yes, this is, Mr. Raxas, this is questions of Mr. Piga on his testimony, sir.
Okay, I'm waiting for the public comment section next.
Okay, thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mr. Piga on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
I'm not seeing any.
Great, this portion of the meeting will be closed. Now to public comment. Do any members of the public have any comments about this application? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Go ahead, Robert.
Yes, Robert, last name Raskis, R-A-S-H-K-E-S. Address 35 Oak Crest Road. Yes, I have a question about health and safety at the zoo. At the May 29, West Orange Township Council Budget Workshop, the Township CFO and the Township's Fire Chief talked about the substantial number of ambulances being dispatched to the zoo and the strain that it places on the firefighters and the service life of the ambulances. I'd like to know more about the first aid resources available at the zoo and whether consideration is being given for the zoo to have ambulances of its own stationed there. I noticed there was a long line of traffic on Memorial Day approaching the zoo going westbound on Northfield Avenue around 12 noon. The traffic jam seemed to be worsened by the unsynchronized sets of traffic lights outside the zoo. This would delay the response time of first responder vehicles being dispatched to the zoo and to other locations in West Orange. Thank you.
Mr. Flader, would I, can I ask that the county speak to our fire chief and/or his representatives to evaluate how many times this happened over the time that the zoo is open? And what can we do to make better response time? Possibly have one ambulance stationed near the zoo at peak hours or peak times when you have most people. I will leave that to you guys to evaluate and make sense of. But that, for safety, health, and welfare, that makes a lot of sense for the zoo visitors and for the township of West Orange.
Dr. Bagel, in response, will convey that, that request and suggestion back to the county people. Again, I point out that Sanji Vargis, who's both the county engineer and also the Director of Public Works, has been a part of this meeting. So I'm sure he's heard carefully everything that's been said, and we'll be back to you on that.
Thank you very much. Do any of the other members of the public have any comments? Councilperson Scarpah, you have your hand raised.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to that. At that meeting, Chief Vecchio has since given us some statistics about that because it was quite a concern. And he also had a wonderful recommendation that perhaps the county might want to provide us with an ambulance that we could use since ours, we are out from so many runs, that might promote the zoo, that could have pictures of the zoo animals. And I would love to work collaboratively with them to maybe see that something like that could happen.
Okay, so Director Vargis, I'm sure, has heard that, and we'll ask that Director Vargis gets back to the administration in town, and you can collaborate and go forward with that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McGovern?
Yes, I just wanted to point out that the Township Engineer, Zaiabeth Carballo, in her report of July 21, 2025, did confirm that the proposed improvements do not meet the definition of minor development and are not subject to additional stormwater management measures since the increase will be de minimis. She confirms that.
Thank you. Okay. Do any of the members of the public have any comments about the application? Please raise your hand and be identified.
I'm not seeing any.
Seeing none, we're going to close that portion of the meeting. Okay, thank you, Mr. Piga. Thank you, Mr. Vargis, for joining us. Thank you, Ms. Fazio.
Thank you.
Director of the zoo. Director of the zoo, always phenomenal. Um, and thank you, Mr. Flader. So to that end, do any members of the board have any questions or comments? Seeing none. So I make a motion that we recommend that, uh, to the county that this isn't, is, is consistent with the master plan. And we have no other recommendations except the ones that would have been articulated. And I recommend that we send that to, uh, the town council and, uh, Turtleback Zoo. PB twenty-five dash oh six Turtleback Zoo, Gibbons Exhibits, five sixty Northfield Avenue Block one sixty-three Lot one Zone R one. Do I have a second?
That came, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman seconds on the motion. Yamalat.
Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Nobrin?
Yes.
Mr. Wilks?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpah?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
So where you know?
Yes.
Chairman Bagel.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you very much. The next regular planning board meeting will be held Wednesday, September third, twenty twenty-five at seven thirty P M via Zoom. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, on Zoom, the, uh, planning board is going into executive session. We will not come back from executive session, so this portion of the, uh, open meeting will be canceled momentarily. I make a motion that the planning board go into executive session. Do I have a second on that motion?
To be clear, to discuss litigated matters.
To discuss litigated matters.
Second.
Mayor McCartney seconds. I'm, all in favor of the motion? Yamalat?
Hi. Hi.
Any opposed? The eyes are above the nose, and I will also make a motion that we close the regular meeting as we go into executive session. Do I have a second on that motion?
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman, uh, seconds. All in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Any opposed? The eyes are above the nose. We're now in executive session. Uh, Megan, would you, uh, turn off the, uh, public portion of the meeting?
Thank you, William, for having, uh, having this hearing for the county. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have a second link, right?
Yeah, I think, I think, I think we have to end that, we have to come out of this and go into a different link.
Okay.
Yep.
Thirty this morning. From Jamalat.
Is everybody okay?
Yeah, gotta get a second link, okay.
I'll click off this one.